Zoom meeting and the email at publiccomments@cityofglendora.org. Brief live tonight, we have two special items, three consent calendar items, two unfinished business items, and one new business item. Amanda W. Sertie-Curt, can you please conduct the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to conduct an oral roll call and request that each council member respond with present when their name is called. Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Frieden Dahl?
Present.
Councilmember Boyer?
Present.
Mayor Pretend Davis?
Present.
And Mayor Alawas?
Present.
All council members are present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alvia. At this point, I'd like to have our invocation conducted by Mr. Ike Graham from Foothill Christian Church. Ike?
All right, let us pray. Lord, you say to enter your gates with thanksgiving and a course with praise. So here we go with our thanks. Thank you for bearing the penalty of man's rebellion and the perfect life and ultimate sacrifice of Jesus Christ. Thank you that you give wisdom, Lord, to those who ask. And for Glendora, Lord, thank you for sustaining Glendora during this last year. We thank you that we haven't had as many businesses shut down as some other areas. And thank you for the leadership, Lord, that you that has shown love for our local businesses and really cared for them. I thank you, Lord, that we've been spared riots and also really highly visible incidents that could have brought pain instead of peace. I thank you, Lord, for the protection of our recently appointed police chief and for his wonderful 30 years of experience that he gives us. Lord, would you give our people respect for him? And would they look up to him, we can give him favor and not have disdain for the police force, God? Lord, I pray that everybody here would have patience for each other tonight. I pray you would remind us all of our higher unity that bonds us, and that is to serve the city. Would you grant the council members patience and a listening ear for city residents and their requests? And just give clarity, Lord, for our council members and our mayor, Michael Alawas, Karen Davis, David Friendedall, Gary Boyer, and Metal Thompson. We ask for your wisdom, God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
It's a pleasure.
I'd like to ask Joe Sina to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
Will everybody could please rise, put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. This brings us to special items. Proclamation proclaiming February 22nd through the 28th as Glendora Small Business Appreciation Week. Like to invite Councilmember Gary Boyer up to read into the record and present the proclamation.
Thank you, Michael. It would be my my pleasure. And I really got to give a shout out to staff. You sent this to us in nice, large print tonight, so I don't have to read the fancy one. Thank you. Okay, whereas the City Council of the City of Glendora desires to establish the last week in February as Glendora Business Appreciation Week and will commence in 2021. And whereas Glendora businesses provide essential employment opportunities, provide local tax revenues, and make other significant contributions to our community that promote both educational opportunities for our children and a variety of activities thereby increasing the quality of life in our community. And whereas businesses play a pivotal role in the strengthening of our city by embracing job creation and innovative technologies and by employing a diverse workforce to preserve the economic well-being of our citizens. And whereas the City of Glendora is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of our entrepreneurs in all sectors and all areas who choose to call our city home and in so doing contribute greatly to the ongoing economic development of our city. And whereas the City of Glendora seeks to demonstrate our commitment to and partnership with our city businesses who help power our city's economic development efforts and to express our appreciation to them for this vital contribution. And whereas the City of Glendora recognizes the many charitable civic and philanthropic contributions made by our city business partners and supports their involvement in helping to sustain such charitable efforts within our community. And whereas the City of Glendora, including dedicated city staff, talented city volunteers, and generous city residents, are collectively proud to support a business climate that encourages investment, job growth, and community involvement. And whereas the City of Glendora enjoys an extensive and strong partnership with the Glendora Chamber of Commerce, whose active leadership and mission is to promote local purchasing, connect, and grow the business community. The Chamber works tirelessly to support its growing membership by providing tools and resources to assist the business to prosper and adapt to the economic client and become an integral part of the Glendora business community. And whereas it is fitting to offer the citizens of our great city a unique opportunity to recognize, celebrate, and support our city business partners for the essential role they play in moving Glendora forward. And whereas business appreciation events offer citizens of the City of Glendora a unique opportunity to recognize city businesses for the essential role they play in preserving the quality of life enjoyed and moving the City of Glendora forward. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Glendora, do hereby proclaim February 22nd through 28th, 2021, as the first annual Glendora Business Appreciation Week in the City of Glendora. And we call upon all city residents to help express in any way possible, and most specifically through patronage, our collective appreciation for the profound contributions our city business partners make. In witness whereof, our mayor hereunto has set his hand and caused the city seal of the City of Glendora to be affixed this ninth day of February 2021.
Well, you get a gold star. That was a long one, Gary.
It was. Yeah, you know, I just want to add, there's so many things have happened. This is such an amazing community. You know, I have seen a couple of comments and talked to some business owners. We we had one just recently that a young girl walked into a business here in town and and gave the person working there an envelope with a note on it that said to give to the owner. And inside the envelope was some cash along with a note saying, we know how difficult it is right now with the lockdowns to keep your business open, and we know this isn't much, but hopefully it will help a little. I've heard other stories of people going into businesses and restaurants and maybe buying a sandwich and, you know, leaving an extra $40 or $50 just because they know how tough it is for for everybody right now. I got to tell you, it is amazing what the businesses in this community do for the community. And sometimes we don't realize it. We don't notice when, you know, somebody's placing an ad in a little league program or they're sponsoring a dance recital or donating food to a fundraiser for the Rotary Club or something. These are the kinds of things that our businesses do. And and I sort of ran the numbers. If during the week of February 22nd to 28th, we got 50,000 people here in Glendora. If each of us who have the ability would just spend an extra $20 that week in a local business, go buy an extra meal, go buy somebody a gift, have a little work done to your car, whatever it is that you need to have done, an extra $20 from every resident in the City of Glendora that week would create a million dollars worth of business in the City of Glendora during that week. So we need to do what we can to support our businesses, and our businesses have always been there to support us. So we do appreciate that. I understand that I'm going to be presenting this proclamation to the president of our Chamber of Commerce, Zach Bushy. Are you on here? Here you are. I do see you on there.
I am.
So Zach, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you. And with the magic of electronics, it has just been sent to you electronically. But we'll get the original one to you as well. If you'd like to share a few words, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. I'm actually the chair of the Glendora Chamber. Joe Sina is the president, and I want to take the first and foremost to thank Joe. Most people don't know what we've gone through the last year. Everybody's been going through their own items, but Joe Sina has, business hours don't matter anymore. And, you know, I said when I took over as chair this year, I wouldn't have it any other way. I'm up to the challenge, and there's been things that I had no idea to foresee. It's been interesting. Joe Sina has been there along the way after hours, everything like that, to help me, help the businesses. So first and foremost, I want to help Joe Sina. We have been trying to get items together between the LA County, LA County Health Department, the state. Every time some guidelines come out, it's a it's just a chase to see where the information is. And most businesses don't know that. And Joe Sina has been absolutely vital to collect that information and make it available in one spot, which is easier for businesses to get a hold of. We thank you, the City of Glendora, for making the Glendora Business Appreciation Week. In all honesty, it is very much appreciated. We love it. It should be all year long. It's interesting. You could say whatever you want about $20 here and $20 there to help patronize these businesses and keep them open. And I think Joe and I have learned that it will never be enough to make everybody whole. They're going to be behind their entire business ownership, which is usually tied to small businesses have their their house tied to their life, you know, to these businesses. And most people don't understand that. But I have learned in the last six months, humbling, that sometimes they just they need somebody to talk to, an ear to bend. So rather than, you know, helping them with the paperwork and the guidelines and such, which we have been doing as much as we can, I have also sat with these business owners at their house, at my house, at their business while it was closed down in parking lots. And we've laughed, we've cried, we've literally been through all these things. And I won't share details, but it has been a hard year. It has been a humbling year. And these businesses have been through more than anyone will ever know. Through more than any CNN or Yahoo or MSN update title will ever show, you know, stay at home and close businesses to be safe. It goes so far beyond that that people don't understand unless they've owned a small business. And I just, I thank God for these business owners because they have been through a lot and they're holding their heads up high. And I will do whatever I can for them, you know, regardless of guidelines, we will be safe. But that being said, as shares of Target, Walmart, Home Depot, and all these stores go up, I think there's a lot of hypocrisy, and we won't get into it. But I will stand by every single business, every single small business in Glendora and do what I can for them, whether it's promoting, patronizing, or we're just there to talk to the friend. And it's, God bless them for what they've been through.
Thank you, Zach. Really appreciate those words.
Great. Thank you, Gary. Thank you, Zach. Joe, did you want to say a few words? Or did you want to wait till maybe I have a comment?
Just just really quick again, thank you for this proclamation. It's, you know, Glendora businesses are wonderful and proud to work for them. We just wanted to kind of give a little shout out to. We have several of our board members besides our chair, Zach Bushy. We have our, one of our vice chairs, Ashley Rizop Thaddeon, Mercedes Castro, Gary Clifford, and the best legislative chair in the valley, Dr. Cliff Hamlow. You know, without them and the rest of our board, we couldn't do what we do. So I'm looking forward to having some fun with this February 22nd through the 28th, and I'll talk with you soon.
Thank you, Joe. You guys have, thank you, Joe. You guys have a great, great group. Go ahead, Zach.
Mayor, if I could add one more thing?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to thank you personally. A lot of people don't know, but in the last four or five days, my family's been through a lot. They lost my grandfather. We went through over 24 hours without hearing anything while he was on life support. No doctors, no update, no anything like that, which is very frustrating. I called Michael Lawis and asked him for help. And within 20 minutes, we had doctors, administrators, VPs on the phone. Cell phone numbers being exchanged with me and Minnesota's a nurse. My other family members getting updates. And for the loss of my grandfather, Chris Beck, a small business owner over 60 years, lived here in Glendora. Michael, as a friend, thank you so much for what you did.
My pleasure. Whatever I can do for you and your family. It's absolutely. I'm there for you and everyone else that I can help. Thank you, Zach. Does, so with that takes us to our second item, COVID-19 reopening of the economy. An update from our city manager, Mr. Adam Raymond.
Good evening, everyone. Just a very short update tonight. No major changes have occurred since last time we were here, two weeks ago. Although we do anticipate, if you go to the next slide, I believe there's just one vaccines. I wish the city could provide all the answers to all the questions that we get on a regular basis. And we can only point you to where the state and county are publishing information. The state, the myturn.ca.gov is the main website. The county is vaccinatela county.com where they push out information from the state of California and can help you with appointments and eligibility and locations here in Los Angeles County. As you may have seen, Blue Shield through other relationships with Kaiser have taken over the state's vaccination programs. Details are still forthcoming. The other large piece of information that we're currently waiting on is reopening of schools. At the state level, we've heard talks of an announcement this week whereby the state will authorize all school reopenings. Currently, City of Glendora remains in the purple tier with Los Angeles County, where only TK through second are allowed to reopen. Both Glendora and Charter Oak conflicted options for reopening in those, which is in addition to those children with special needs, which we're allowed to return now. So the good news is infection rates are decreasing pretty rapidly. Hospitalizations are cutting more than 50%. Since the peak, we've had infection, number of new cases drop almost 80% in a month period from January 8th to February 8th. So we're definitely heading in the right direction. We're hoping for some indoor dining from the state in the purple tier. Hopefully that occurs as well as we approach the winter months. And look forward to the major announcements that are coming. But the update from last week on what's allowed to open has remained the same and be happy to answer any questions. And with that, Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Thank you. That was short and sweet. Does anyone have any questions for Adam on this? No? Okay, we'll move on. We don't have any student reports tonight, so it'll bring us to a public comment. So open up the public comment period. I would like to invite members of public to address the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once on both on and off agenda items. There's your time to speak uninterrupted. Public comment is limited to 30 minutes. If you wish to request to speak, select the raise hand icon in the Zoom before the close of the public comment period. You will then be called on when it's your turn to speak. Now, do we have any, anyone wishing to speak or any letters that need to be read? You're muted?
Apologize. We did receive one correspondence that was made part of the record incorporated into the agenda packet, distributed to council and made available to the public. We have one request via Zoom, and we have one email that was received after the email packet was made available to council, which I will read. So if it's okay, I'm going to read the one email, and then we'll call on the Zoom participant to make their comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, this email is from a Mr. Joe Heidelmeyer. Respectfully, I ask to counsel to once again consider a revision to ordinance 2055 issued in October of 2020. The ordinance 2055 effectively changed all of the residential zoning for single-family home neighborhoods in the City of Glendora with that reasonable effort to solicit comments, a notice to the residents of the City of Glendora, as I understand, would be the normal process in any zoning change brought to the council by Planning Department. The people of the city were not notified of the consideration of such a radical change to the zoning laws allowing STRs in every single-family home neighborhood. Ordinance 2055 effectively allows short-term rentals, STRs, to be used in any residence in any zone within the city and creates language for STRs that are very similar in most every sense to the language for a hotel in the city zoning language ordinance 2017. Please do not misunderstand me. I do not wish to make changes that would affect STRs in rooms within an owner-occupied home, affect the use of STRs as they are used in the city currently as corporate housing, such as APU, Citrus College, and other corporate rentals for transient individuals linked to such properties, whether they be rooms, apartments, or single-family homes. Affect any pre-ordinance 2055 arrangements made by the city or its individual members as they relate to STRs. My concern and my request for modification of 2055 or creation of a new ordinance with corrective language involve just several issues. One, the use of estate homes, those with higher rental renter occupancy ability based on housing size, square footage, bedrooms, and other living areas, swimming pools, and other amenities, such as the site of the party house on Sierra Madre in August 2020 and the home across the street from me at 1236 Sierra Madre for excessive renters, guests, and the parties and events that have historically been held in large estate homes throughout not only Glendora, but Los Angeles, Beverly Hills, Hollywood, and many other cities throughout the country. Use the estate homes that are vacant, non-owner-occupied, non-resident homes for use as STRs. Most every city that allows STRs has restrictions on single-family homes, even Airbnb that has restrictions on their hosts in the Los Angeles market. They are as follows. From Airbnb website for host renting in LA County, here's what hosts need to know. Host must register with the city planning department and pay an $89 fee. According to the city planning department, enforcement will begin November 1st of 2019. Only the host's primary residence can be rented out defined as the place where a host lives for at least six months out of the year. Renters cannot, can't home share without prior written approval of their landlord. Stabilized rent control units are not eligible for home sharing, even if you own your RSO unit. Hosts may not register or operate more than one home sharing rental unit at a time. Hosts cannot home share for more than 220 days in a calendar year unless they have registered with the city for extended home sharing. And that's time.
Thank you. Joe?
Reset your clock.
I'm going to reset the clock. And Joe Sina?
Okay.
Hi, Joe. You've got three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Alawas, City Council, city staff. Thanks for allowing me to speak again tonight. My name is Joe, presidency of the Glendora Chamber of Commerce, and I'm proud to help our local businesses and disseminate information to our residents. Funding. Let's start out with funding. Businesses are needing funding. They're looking for ways to kind of get out of this mess that we're in. PPP Part Two is back open for businesses. I know some have already received funding and some are in the process of it. And also the forgiveness of the PPP One is also in process. Round two of the state grant that I reported on last meeting. The round two closed yesterday, so we're eagerly awaiting who was chosen for those. I'm still looking for a local business that got the first round. If anyone knows, please let me know. Looking ahead to some chamber events, all being virtual. Thursday, we're having our lunch mixer where Teresa Letassa, UMO, Glendora Employment Agency, we'll be going over new HR rules and laws. There's a ton of them. So if you want to learn something about that, please join us. Then on Friday, we will be co-hosting with Pal Chamber, a virtual coffee chat with Assemblymember Blanca Rubio at 1:30 PM. So if you want to RSVP for that, you can go on our site to do that. Looking ahead to March, we'll be presenting your State of the City video on March 3rd at 11:00 AM is when it will premiere. So look forward to that. And then on the 31st of March at 6:30 PM, we're going to have a live Zoom webinar of the state of the schools. So that one, we could fit 500 people on it, so hopefully we can fill it up and then also stream to the rest of them. So hopefully get a lot of parents on and stuff, and the schools will have a lot to share at that point. The Chamber is also working on additional workshops. Our cuisine of the foothills that'll be in May will be more of a restaurant week. So we'll look for special things to happen each day and so much more. So we'll continue to do what we do. And again, I'm looking forward to Glendora Business Appreciation Week and try and do some fun but virtual things. So thank you very much. Have a great rest of your night.
Thank you, Joe. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
No further requests have been received, Mayor.
Wonderful. Thank you, Alvia. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period and bring this to reports and statements, inviting council members to give the reports. I'm going to jump ahead because we have a special guest on with us right now. We're going to be closing in the memory of Mr. John Wallace and Mr. Chris Beck. First up, though, I would like to ask Dr. Cliff Hamlow to say a few words about Mr. Wallace. Can we have?
Get unmuted. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for the opportunity to recognize a longtime Glendora resident, Dr. John Wallace, who went to his eternal home about 10 days ago. John was definitely Glendoran. He and his wife of 45 years, his wife Gail, have lived in Glendora virtually all of their married life. Their sons, David and Matt, attended Glendora schools, graduating from Glendora High School. Their daughter Katie graduated from Western Christian High School. All three graduated from Arizona Pacific University. And all three are married and live in Glendora. So it's a Glendora family. John came to APU as a student in 1972. And as an APU graduate, he worked his way through the ranks, working at APU, starting as a janitor and serving as a vice president for student life for a number of years before becoming the university's 16th president in 2000. He retired in 2019 after serving 43 years at the university in various capacities. He was definitely a man of God. He loved most to speak to students in chapel. And he's preached many times in churches here in Glendora. For the past several years, John has battled cancer, which finally took his life. He was a student's president. And in that, he probably knew the trails around Glendora as well as anybody because one of his favorite things was to get students up early in the morning, meet someplace. It was at Glendora or Garcia Trail until I closed. He'd meet them in the morning and they'd hike, and he got to know them. He loved students. He mentored literally hundreds. He made it a priority to develop real and personal relationships with members of the student body. Many of those students now live in the City of Glendora. We have between 1,500 and 2,000 grads that live in the city. To honor John's remarkable life, leadership, and contribution to Arizona Pacific University, the Wallace family has established the John R. Wallace Endowed Scholarship for scholarships for students, if anyone wishes to contribute. So I would say again, thank you for recognizing Dr. John Wallace for his lifetime of contribution to students who have enriched our Glendora community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hamlow. I greatly appreciate that. Also going to be closing this evening in the memory of Mr. Chris Beck. That's Zach Bushy's grandfather. He was 88 years old when he passed yesterday. And he moved here with his wife and young children to Glendora in 1956 from New York. Was a small business owner his entire life, and he was survived by six children. So with that, Metal, do you want to start us off on reports and statements?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Cliff, thank you for those great thoughts and words that were from your heart regarding our dear friend, John. He and I became very good friends when the credit union moved up here, and we often would meet for coffee as CEOs to talk about life and challenges that our companies had and our ministries had. And he was a very, very real guy, you know, authentic man. And not only his faith And not only his uh his faith, but family and all of the business that he that he led and uh we are, we are going to miss him. So thank you, Cliff, for uh taking your time. If there's anybody that knows that school and knows John, it certainly is you. And so we just, I I personally just want to say thank you for speaking into that. And uh, thank you, Gary, for uh reading the probably the longest statement that the city has ever written. Uh, there were 10 wherethes. And so Joe and Zach, you probably have have captured the uh the uh most there. But everything that was said was uh right on. And I too want to uh earn to urge everybody to continue to shop and eat in our city and uh and be uh be a part of making sure that the businesses survive and continue to grow. And I appreciate you, Joe, Michelle, for the tremendous work that you do each and every day, each and every night in answering phone calls and everything. So keep up the the incredible work. Uh, one other thing before I uh close with uh with uh one more thing is rental assist assistance is going well. Uh, for those of you who are uh facing some challenging times, tough times in terms of keeping your rent paid, the city does have funds that are available. Uh, and you need to go to to our to our website and apply. And our city staff is very good and very prompt at assisting you. So I would encourage you to do that and uh allow us to, you know, be of help. The last thing that I want to close with is um uh I have been getting a number of uh of calls and uh notes about uh these bins that we have around town. They're bins uh that are well intentioned and they're bins uh that allow us to uh put our uh clothes and our used uh shoes and uh, you know, items such such as that that we want to give to, you know, those that that are that are in in need. And these these bins are very good. They foster the charitable spirit that we as a city and we as a people have. And there's uh many around town, there's some on Route 66. But this past week, I got a very compelling note from uh Ryan. I won't say his last name because I haven't asked him to use his name. And pictures accompanied that. And uh, a lot of these bins have become uh spots where frankly trash uh is, you know, thrown uh from mattresses to furniture that is beat up and uh worn out and other and, you know, other things. And uh, this past week, uh, we took some action that I want to express my thanks to, you know, Athens for. And Athens went went out and picked up seven bins of trash that was piled in front of these of these bins. Now, remember the bins are well intentioned, they're charitable bins. There are places that we can give things that that, you know, we don't uh need now. And uh, those bins are used to supplement things that other people need. But they're not meant as a point where trash goes. And so uh, thank you to Athens and the tremendous job that they did to rapidly clean up uh all of this trash. But with that said, uh, I I would like uh to ask for a second uh to allow at a future council meet meeting to have the staff look at our existing rules regarding these bins. Uh, the authority that the city has uh about the, you know, upkeep, where these bins are, you know, placed, who's who make sure that the bins are being used effectively and serviced effectively? And uh, not to eliminate them, but to better use them and hopefully to uh better to better incent the uh use of these of these bins. So uh, I would uh, so, you know, Adam and I have talked about this and uh, we have found out that really our city laws are not clear on 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 what these are and where these are placed and who's responsible for keeping them up. And so I would like to uh to uh have some support to agendize this and have staff go back and uh give us just an update and their best sense of 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 how more effectively that these bins can be can be uh used. So uh, with that, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd I'd like to request a second. And then Adam can speak into this if there is a second uh to agendize this and any other thoughts that, you know, he might have.
Do we have a second for Mendel's request?
I would like to make that second, please.
All right, so moved. Adam, do you want to chime in on this?
Uh, just just briefly for for background, without doing too much discussion here. Um, we have received several inquiries from several council members over the past three weeks as with more and more of these bins, as as a councilman indicated, with the best of intentions have become basically de facto trash dumps and and some of the issues that surround them. So uh, happy to come back with a synopsis of both our land use rules and any um, any other cities that have implemented any rules surrounding these to ensure frequent uh pickup of any unused trash. What we've seen for the public, uh, most of our inquiries are these, these bins are located on vacant properties. And so they they do create a hazard sometimes. So in our effort to keeping Glendora clean and beautiful, um, we're happy to take on the task. Um, and we'll be back before this group within a month, if that's okay with with the first and the second.
Absolutely.
Yes, that, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
That is all that I that I that I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. David?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would love to echo our appreciation to Athens Services for the continued ambassadorship of what is great community service. Yes, they're a paid vendor, but they're really much more than a paid vendor, so thank you to Athens. Also look forward to the continuing appreciation for of our businesses all month and continuing into the season and ask and pray that the community members will behave and do the right thing so we can get out of this pandemic and get back to a new form of life. So mask up and let's go enjoy our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Thank you, Michael. Um, just to tag on to Mendel's comments, you know, one thing that we all as residents here in town need to remember is that tho- those bins are put there for items that could be recycled and reused. Um, so many times we'll see things that are dumped there that people, you know, thi- think that it's okay just to drop drop certain things off. You know, mattresses are not going to be reused. And so um, again, going back to Athens being our our trash provider here in town, they do have bulk pickup service available at no additional cost. So uh, you can call Athens and have that kind of stuff picked up from your home. But but um, that's not what those bins are for, but uh it is a good idea to address it. On that note, I actually want to ask about having an item put on a future agenda. Um, with the, you know, things uh starting to lighten up and we see light at the end of the tunnel with this pandemic we've been dealing with. Um, hopefully, we're going to see activity at schools uh again soon. And I think it might be a good idea for us to have a future agenda item to get a report on all of the various MOUs and partnerships that we have with Glendora Unified. I know um, there's a a number of different projects that we work on together and shared facilities and things like that. And I would like to get an update on that so we know exactly where we are and if it's necessary to address any of those at this time. So um, I um, again, I'm asking for a second if somebody uh thinks that's a good idea.
Second.
Mendel, right? We have first and a second.
Okay, that's really all I have and um, uh, again, support your local business, thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, following up on the Reverend Dr. Hamlow's comments that uh Dr. Wallace was a lifelong educator and the best lesson he ever taught was that with his life. He was one that was very humble, had a servant's heart and was always asking what he could do to help the city of Glendora because he cared about the community he lived in. He was a great friend to the Glendora Ministerial Association and in fact was one of our keynote speakers for the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which is a segue to that is that it's coming up on February 24th. And I know that John always supported that event. And I think continuing to support his legacy of his spiritual life, his leadership and his education, that uh we could all support that as we support the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast on the 24th and the community comes together for that time of prayer. And Mr. Mayor, I'll let you give the rest of the details on that.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, well, this is going to be a pre-recorded event. Uh, we've have some interesting interviews lined up for you, plus my message. And I'm sure Karen is going to do a fabulous job in her hosting of this, plus the different prayers and music that will be accompanied with it. So we're looking forward to the 24th. Um, I'd like to um to thank again all the city employees that were recognized last week for their service to the city of Glendora and our staff who put that event together. Uh, it was it was a great uh event. Uh, wish we could have done it a different way, but staff went out of their way to make it happen. And I'm grateful for that. We have some great staff here at the city. Um, at our January 27 sanitation meeting, uh, the directors were shown uh test charts uh that the sanitation district uses to illustrate the testing of COVID-19. They test every three days, uh, and the latest testing numbers uh showed a significant drop, almost a straight down drop in the COVID-19 in in the sewage. Kind of a not necessarily pleasant or uh thing to talk about. However, it shows a trend and a pattern going in the right direction. So um, with that, uh, brings us to reordering of the agenda items. Does anyone wish to reorder or add to the agenda at this time?
The mayor, if you don't mind, we just have one brief update that while we still have some people on, we wanted to provide on the gold line, if that's okay with you.
Uh, sure.
Um, just for the, just for everyone watching, we had, we previously had a council meeting where we had a discussion on the closure of Glendora Avenue being postponed. Uh, staff received word uh on Friday of last week and clarification on Monday that Glendora Avenue, uh, due to some backlog of water fixes, there there are three lines that run under the Glendora Avenue area. And with proper testing and and uh ensuring water is clean, we'll likely see delays through the end of February and maybe the beginning of March. Um, as as this body heard, uh, Elwood is scheduled to be closed as Glenwood already is facing as as begun permanent closure. Staff made the request and Goldmine has accepted deferring the Elwood closure to a date to be determined. So that date that was scheduled for February 15th through May 15th has been postponed and definitely our goal is to push that postponement until Glendora Avenue is open to alleviate as many of the traffic concerns as possible. So uh, the signs have been removed. Notice has been posted on the Goldmine's various social media platforms and just want to do ensure everyone here knows that uh that is occurring. And as soon as we know more, all of you will as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. So in closing and encapsulation, it will not be opened up on the 25th. All right. Thank you. And so since no one wanted to reorder the agendas, brings us to uh consent calendar, items four through six. Um, the consent counter will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion unless a council member has requests removed for separate uh discussion. Does anyone wish to pull or comment on any of the items? No? So I request a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Now, Madam Deputy City Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not take a roll call vote. We have a motion by Councilmember Frieden Dahl and a second by Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Frieden Dahl?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas?
Yes.
And that passes 5-0, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alvia. This brings us to unfinished business, uh, first mile, last mile demonstration project update. I'd like to invite Transportation Manager, Mr. Stephen Matier, to present the staff report.
Great, uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. My name is Stephen Matier, I'm the transportation manager for the city of Glendora. Um, this item actually segues into kind of the conversation we were just having about Glendora Avenue. Um, as you know, we've um installed a demonstration project on Glendora Avenue from Foothill to Ada and this is a kind of a progress report halfway through the project. Uh, next slide, please. Well, I'd like to touch on what is first last mile as a kind of a refresher. What is the demonstration project, our future plans and the next steps that we have? Next slide, please. So first last mile planning is an overall concept of how a person goes from their house to the train station or the bus stop. And then once they're off transit, how do they safely navigate to work, school, uh, medic medical appointments, um, wherever they're going? And really, the idea here is that if you can make that first and last part of the trip comfortable, it makes transit that much more attractive and safe for people to use. Next slide, please. Um, so part of our goal with our first last mile program here is to connect the station to the village. Um, as you know, the station is behind those townhomes um on Vermont. Uh, it's not an intuitive connection if you're not from Glendora. And the idea here is that we can extend the field of the village south as well as make an intuitive connection with the new station, recognizing that a lot of people probably want to be, um, you know, coming to Glendora to see the the village and all the great things that are here. And so how do we make that connection as seamless and as safe as possible? Um, also too is roadway safety. Uh, we know from past experiences with the metro stations as well as the environmental document from the Gold Line, um, there will be a substantial increase in walking and biking to the Gold Line Station. Recognizing that, we want to make sure the roads are safe for not just walkers and bikers, but of all users. So motorists, um, goods movement, uh, people in wheelchairs, uh, mobility scooters, those kind of things. So what can we do looking at the whole whole of the road and how to make that as safe as possible? Um, and last is economic development. Um, as I mentioned, extending the field of village south, there's opportunities now with the station coming in um, to look at potential, you know, new businesses, new restaurants, um, having a a much more vibrant village uh to leverage the Gold Line investment. Um, next slide, please. So what is the demonstration project? It is a temporary improvement um to test the concepts that we discussed in our first last mile program and does that by using lower cost materials that are easy to deploy and easy to remove once we've done um, done the project. Um, next slide, please. So funding for this came from two parts. One was the San Gabriel Valley Council, governments used repurpose funding from the Open Streets Program, which are like the Ciclovia Events. Um, they allowed cities to apply to do these temporary um or pop-up projects. Uh, the other part the city contributed was funds from our bike and pedestrian account, which are funds that are dedicated only to these types of projects. Um, that paid largely for design and some of the material costs you see. One of the big goals of these types of projects is public engagement. Um, it's one thing to have a workshop and to show people lines on a map. It's another thing to actually show stakeholders and residents, this is what it can look like on the street in real time. So in that way, this has been a great tool to engage residents who missed the public workshops and weren't aware of what we were doing. Um, and now they've been able to have a dialogue with a lot of residents um and and stakeholders about what we're what we're thinking and what we're planning. Um, and part of that too is understanding the operational impacts, right? So, you know, we've mentioned things like curb extensions and we found, I'll talk about this a little bit later. Um, you know, is that when we have turning radius changes, for example, that impacts um, not only speed, but what type of vehicle can fit on the street. And so the good thing is that we can make these mistakes now when it's just tape and temporary rather than if we were to do a, you know, permanent project. So I'm understanding how this operates in real time has been really important. Um, next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the materials that we used are generally lower cost. So a lot of what you see is So as I mentioned, the materials that we used um are generally lower cost. So a lot of what you see is tape, and that's why is some of some of the education here is that this is not the permanent project. It's not intended to look final. Um we also use things like delineator posts, which are very easy to put down. It's basically just heated up tar and then you stick them on top. Um we had planters that were part of the grant and then plants were actually loaned to us by Glendora Gardens. So really, we tried to do this project on as much of a budget as possible um to maximize um the the outreach for the dollar that we got. Um next slide, please. As I mentioned, the duration originally was intended to be four months coinciding with reopening of Glendora Avenue. Since that's been delayed and then delayed again, uh we pushed it to the end of March. The idea here is that we want to experience Glendora Avenue um with full traffic so that we understand does this road reconfiguration impact traffic and if it does, to what extent? Um hopefully by the end of March, Glendora Avenue will be reopened and we will be able to conduct our traffic assessment. Um part of this too is a survey. Um we did a social media push. We've done emails to stakeholders. Um Vanessa and I have walked Glendora Avenue and the surrounding area handing out um letters and flyers. Um and we've also uh placed A-frames and posters on Glendora Avenue with survey links. So uh we had a great response rate so far and part of the other value too is that when we're out there repairing or installing, um we're able to engage in with the business owners and uh people walking by about what we're doing and why we're doing it. Um next slide, please. As I mentioned, so far, uh we had, this is from a couple of weeks ago, actually, now we're up to about 305 surveys taken, which is a great response rate um for something that's, you know, been online and we can't really do in person. Um we've what we heard particularly is is the parking, um is that going from angled parking to parallel parking has been an issue, especially for some of the businesses on the um southwest end of this. And so that's some, that's the kind of feedback we want to get now is, you know, if angled parking is is so is critical and it is, that's a issue we need to carry through into our final design plans. Um I mentioned the turn radius issue. That's something we'll be looking at um when we get further into design um and making sure that uh vehicles of the right size can make turns um and aren't encroaching into oncoming lanes. Um one of the things I thought was really interesting is when I've been out there is I've noticed a lot more families riding bikes together in the bike lane. Um particularly with younger children and I what we've heard is that the bike lane does feel safer to use. Um and so that's been a really good data point to collect too, that the users of the bike lane appreciate having the safety barrier um when they ride. Um next slide, please. And I want to remind, remind you, get remind the council of the proposals that we have again to illustrate that what we have currently right now is just a demonstration. And this is kind of the longer term vision. So this is at Ada and and Glendora looking northbound. Um you see the the roundabout here with some curb extensions, landscaping, um enhanced crosswalks. Really, the idea here is to have um a welcome entry point um into the village. Um next slide, please. This is looking south on Glendora Avenue, just south of and the idea here is to show um that angled parking is maintained. Um used to the protected bike lane is raised up to the sidewalk level. Um and this is a illustrative example of, you know, more active street life, the village feel extended further south towards the station. Um next slide, please. This is at Carroll and Glendora Avenue and what I think the showpiece of this to me is the um enhanced crosswalks and the curb extensions here. Um one of the things you've also observed now with with the temporary extensions is a lot more people are crossing Glendora Avenue um along Carroll. I think that's due to the crossing crossing distance being shortened and a better sightline. So I think that's again, it supports this idea that we need to have a better crosswalk here. And again, you can also see the bike lane and um on the west side, given the 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 size of Glendora Avenue, we have some opportunity to create maybe some public space. Um you know, a dog run, bike parking, you know, really, it's it's kind of open ended at this point. Um next slide, please. And this is the northern end of the project of the as we conceived it. Um and this is Glendora and Foothill. Um what you see here is what's called a protected or a Dutch intersection. This allows for bicyclists to make uh traffic movements without um having to swerve across traffic. So it keeps everyone in their own lane, which is uh kind of this is the preferred approach to traffic intersections. Um it also allows pedestrians and motorists to have better sightlines of each other, thereby reducing collisions and um pedestrian impacts. Um and also too, you see some of the decorative pavers and crosswalks here. Really, the idea is to beautify and further bring that that feel of the village uh further south. Um next slide, please. So our next steps is to compile our survey results, conduct bicycle and pedestrian counts, um conduct the traffic assessment. Once we've completed those and we're at the end of the project, we'll be restriping Glendora Avenue back into its original configuration. Um and then we'll be returning to council to provide a final report um of the project. Um next slide, please. Um and uh this is my kid. He rode the bike lane, so I just want to end on that and say thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Stephen. Well done. I'll bring it back to council. Mendel?
Uh yes, sorry, I had to to put my mute my cop. Uh no, nothing to ask. I just want to say thank you for, you know, Stephen. I uh know that David and I uh took about an hour of his time uh the other day to to walk and observe and to listen to everything. Uh I've had uh some folks ask, ask me about things and I referred him to Stephen. And he's been very kind to uh uh let them know what is going on and that this is just a test. I really appreciate the uh surveys and uh the listening that is being done on all of this. It's not a perfect thing now, but we want it to be. And uh Stephen, thank you for the you just tremendous job that you and your team are doing and um looking forward to uh to really the real, real thing. I also wanted to say thank you to extending the time through the end of March. Cause I really do do think that uh that we're going to learn all, you know, a whole lot more uh once uh everything is opened up. So I think that that's uh really, really smart. So thank you and uh good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. David?
Yeah, thank you, Stephen, for the update and for the time a couple of weeks ago as well. It was invaluable. And certainly knowing that what we see today is just the concept. It's not the beauty that this cadulgent may become. So folks out there, don't worry, you won't have punchy sticks down your street. You're going to look a lot better. Uh and and I do appreciate the learn out of this and, you know, turning radiuses and things are are uh certainly mindful and something to be proven. So that's good. Uh and I encourage us as a public to seek out your survey and take it because the input is valuable. So the more we can get, the better our choices could be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Gary?
Um yeah, Stephen, you know, ditto, great job. But you know, one of the things that that we all need to understand is that this is sort of the um uh cornerstone of the entire project. And those of us that have lived here for a long time, we're used to the fact that Foothill Boulevard goes from four lanes down to two lanes, back up to four lanes to two lanes with a turn lane before it turns right on Vista Bonita. And we just drive that because we know it, but it doesn't make sense. Just like coming north on Glendora Avenue into the village. A lot of this are things that we're used to and and so when we see change, it's always hard to accept. But it's important to get this right so that is this project spreads out and goes along Foothill Boulevard all the way over to Grand and down to Route 66. And then especially down Vermont Avenue. It's just really important that we get this very first leg right, and I appreciate the effort being put into it. And I encourage everybody to share your feedback and share any ideas you have. And I don't mean to beat this dead horse, but just telling us that you hate bike lanes. We appreciate that feedback, but it really doesn't help anything. Um if you tell us why you hate bike lanes or why you love bike lanes, that that's the type of information that we could really use because maybe somebody has an idea that could improve this project. Um or at least not make it something that's going to be a problem that my grandkids are going to be dealing with and that little guy in the picture there at the end. So um good job and let's just continue the conversation and make sure we get it right. Thanks.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Thank you, Stephen. I love this 3D example. And I've heard some uh positive feedback from families that uh appreciate the opportunity to ride bicycles and feel safe while doing that. And so to those folks who say they hate bike lanes, I say before you hate it, maybe, just maybe, get on a bicycle and try it. The fresh air will do you good and maybe change your outlook. And you'll learn uh a new opportunity, a new mode of transportation. So thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Uh Stephen, uh a few questions on, and I know you're very passionate at this and uh and and I like that. I like having passion in uh a certain project. Um so you're anticipating that by April 1, uh this will come down?
I think sometime before that. I want to say about the third week of March, I think is when we're targeting um removing. And so that'll depend on, you know, weather and um, you know, those kind of factors.
So somewhere around our last uh council meeting in March.
Cool. Yeah, that sounds about right. Yes.
Okay, and uh maybe I missed it. I didn't see it quite clearly. The um the bike lane going into the downtown area. How will that work with the parklets that we're anticipating making permanent?
So um if I don't, Olivia, if you mind going back to the one more. Uh right here. So as you can, oh sorry, one, yeah, right there. Um so the way this will terminate into the village is what's called a shero. So you see that that bicycle stamping in the street. Uh what that does is that just signals that, you know, to share the road, kind of what's already the current um practice. Um so really, there won't be any, you know, moving of a parkler, moving the curb line um in the village at this time. So this this project really only goes up to um Foothill and Glendora. It doesn't go into the village.
Okay, all right. I just want to be clear with that. And um in the survey, you had, um I know there's a lot of questions and uh I guess it went all up and down with emotions and everything, but can you give us a sense of the acceptability of the concept? I know we had some areas there that people had some concerns over, but you'd get it, were you able to get a sense of the acceptability?
Yeah, um I think it's been pretty. I would say it's, I'm trying to uh about get the numbers correct in my mind. I want to say probably about 37% supported the the demo, the look of the demo and about 47 did not like the look of the demo. Um I think a a other data point related to that is that there was, I would say, well over 50%, probably approaching 60% um said they do plan on uh walking and biking to the Gold Mine and that if we were to build improvements like this, they would feel safer walking and biking. Um so I think a lot of the the the, I would say, the critical comments were mostly just focused on the aesthetics of the project, right? That this does look like a demo project. This does look like an unpolished uh bike lane. So um I took that as encouragement that, you know, when we get into design, we need to be very careful about um, you know, things like landscaping, um, you know, tho- those types of factors in the project.
So it's probably fair to say that we've learned quite a bit through this demo.
Yeah, yeah. And I think, you know, the fact that we've gotten over 300 responses. I mean, I think if we can get to 350, we have what's called a statistical valid valid sample of the population. Um we'll have a very clear sense of of what the community wants and doesn't want out of a project like this.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Any final comments from the council? No, and we'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Olivia, you want to take a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have a motion from Councilmember Friedandall, a second by Mayor Protam uh Davis to receive and file the report. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedandall?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas?
Yes.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Olivia. Let's bring us to item number eight, consideration of an ordinance and resolution relating to chapter 2.04.010. City Council meeting some rules for conducting public meetings. I'd like to invite uh City Clerk Kathleen Sussman to report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um tonight before you is the final version of the resolution we would like the city council to consider. Uh next slide, please. Uh this slide provides you with the basic uh timeline of the meetings conducted and the direction provided and researched by staff. Where we are today is um the resolution has been um proposed and attached. We took direction from council on the January 26th meeting. And we have incorporated those changes into the resolution. Um and we're ready for uh council consideration. Uh next slide. There were um five areas in which additional changes to the resolution presented on the 26th um were incorporated. The first was the curfew and the direction given was to maintain the 10:30 curfew. Second was communion, community recognition, and that will be whenever possible to uh schedule recognitions to be conducted at the quarterly presentations instead of council meetings. The third is there were additional changes to the reordering of of the business items and how that would be presented. The three main cha- areas were to add reports to the end of member statements. So that became member statements slash reports, statements of from the council as well as the city attorney and the city manager were moved to occur um after public comment. And the third main change was to keep council staff items, but rename it so it's reflects members slash staff close closing comments. Um the rules for parliamentary procedures, the city attorney has provided us with verbiage to um clarify uh Rosenberg's rules of order as it relates to voting specifically um abstaining or abstentions. And that has been incorporated into the resolution as well as a ordinance is presented to you for your introduction and consideration that will allow the city staff to combine closed session business items and business into a single agenda and prepare that ordinance so that in the future, the start meeting start time will um occur at 6 o'clock. Uh where closed session will be conducted and then the regular meeting would start at 7. Next slide. Um one thing that did come up um after the posting of the agenda is we are requesting uh one additional or additional changes. Um one of the areas we're asking for changes is Article 1, section or Article 1 J, Section 3 and 5, we're requesting some additional changes to that section to delete a a rule that um we've utilized in the past and that will deleting that rule is for um public commoners addressing officials by names or questioning them without permission. Uh next slide. Before you is the cleaned up version of our order of business at is as it is currently proposed. And next slide. Uh next steps, if everything goes as we hope, the council will um consider adopting the resolution presenting presented to you today. Introduce the ordinance for first reading and then staff will, if appropriately, schedule the second reading. Will also upon adoption have that ordinance published and that ordinance will take effect within 30 days after its passage. And then in addition, once the ordinance is adopted, staff will also begin the process of updating and incorporating the outline changes into all public meeting agenda layouts. We anticipate that all these changes will be incorporated into the agenda effective April 2021. Next slide. So at this point, I would, I'm here to answer any questions by the city council. And the recommendations before the city council tonight are to introduce the first reading of the ordinance entitled an ordinance of the city council of the city of Glendora, California. Amending section 2.04.010 of the Glendora Municipal Code relating to city council meetings. By reading of the title only and waiving further reading, also direct staff to sec- um schedule second reading to occur on February 23rd, 2020. And adopt the the city council resolution entitled a resolution adopting and establishing rules for the conduct of public meetings, proceedings and business and repealing resolution 07-17 or any other ru- resolution in conflict or inconsistent herewith. And approve staff's recommendation to um incorporate requested revisions to Article 1 J, Section 3 and 5. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Kathleen. It's a little bit of work, but we're getting there. Bring it back to city council. Uh Mendel?
Kathleen, you've done a superb job. Uh I have
Kathleen, you've done a superb job. I have read this, and the briefing that Adam and David and I had today confirmed that all of the changes that I think we, but I, I'll just speak for me, had addressed, have, you know, been made. The only question that I have, and maybe I, I missed what you said, but I thought I had read that this is effective on April one. Did I read that correctly, or when does this become effective?
April first.
April first.
Correct, because we need the ordinance to be adopted and to be in effect. And then we also need time to change all of the public meeting agenda work.
Okay, okay, because I was gonna ask.
I don't know if you all appreciate the irony on that, but.
Well, yeah, you, you beat me to the punch, Bill. I, I, I didn't know if I had read that correctly or if it was a test to make sure that we had read it in full. But, but my, my more serious question was, why, why does it take so, so long? But you've just, you've, you've answered that. So I fully support this. An excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. David?
Yes, thank you, Kathleen and team, for a great job, and I want to reemphasize one point that you went through quickly that public can recognize too, is that with this success, we are indeed standardizing the format and meeting program for all commissions and sessions, not just the city council. So it's a great tool, citywide, and great product. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Gary?
No, no questions. Great job, Kathleen.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
No comments. Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Karen. I have a question. Kathleen, can you go back to the slide with the new additions of those J, up to J five? That one right there. I have a question with the last item there. It's cumbersome how it reads, and I was wondering if we can possibly make an adjustment to that, so there's some clarity to it. I would suggest that the last, the last paragraph read, questions asked of any individual member of such legislative body may, here are my notes, may or may not be responded to at the direction of the member, at the member. Questions asked of any member of staff may or may not be responded to at the direction of the chair. And strike off the, the last portion of it, or of any member of a legislative body. It's misleading, and it's not clear.
Are you intending to say direction or discretion?
Discretion, I'm sorry. It's misleading and what that means, as it's written.
Is, is the intent for whoever the chair is of a board or the mayor to make that determination if a council member has to respond?
No, it just, it just is misleading in the sense that, here, let's, let me bring this back up here.
I can speak to that briefly, Mayor. The mayor raised the issue with me, and he's concerned that the language as we currently drafted means that the mayor gets to decide if an individual member of the council responds. And his amendment would say, with respect to comments or questions made about an individual member of a legislative body, it's up to that individual member to decide if they're going to respond. But a question directed to staff, you know, as is the current practice, sometimes the mayor will say, Mr. City Manager, can you answer that question? Or Mr. Public Works Director, or Madam Planning Director, can you answer that question? So it, I, I thought his observation was a fair observation. It makes it clear that comments and questions to legislative members, it's up to them if they want to respond. Comments and questions to staff, it's up to the chair of the legislative body to direct an answer.
Well said, Bill.
We still can make the, we can make that requested amendment if it's incorporated into the motion when that motion is made.
So then can I ask for a motion on this item in a second?
So, so when you get to the resolution, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution as amended.
Okay. Well, I'm done with my, my comments on there. And well done, Kathleen. This is in the works for how many years now?
A lot.
A lot. A lot. And I think we did a good job collectively on getting there and cleaning this up moving forward. So, so I request a motion on this item. And Kathleen, you, or Elvia, do you want to read the city's recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The recommended action is to introduce for first reading, Ordinance twenty fifty eight entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glendora, California, amending section two point zero four point zero one zero of the Glendora Municipal Code relating to the city council meetings by reading of title only and waiving further reading. Schedule for second reading, Ordinance twenty fifty eight for, twenty fifty eight for February twenty third of twenty twenty one city council meeting, and adopting a city council resolution CC twenty twenty one zero two as amended, entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glendora, adopting and establishing rules for the conduct of public meetings, proceedings, and business, and repealing Resolution zero seven dash seventeen, or any resolution in conflict or inconsistent herewith. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I think I heard Councilmember Thompson loudly over everybody else. Is there a second?
David?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. A second by Councilmember Friedandall. I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedandall?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Davis? I think she may be muted.
Can you unmute? There you go.
Yes, I kept clicking unmute. Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Alawas?
Yes.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, real quick, just for confirmation, that will incorporate staff's recommended, recommended changes except for under number, section five, which we will change out and use your verbiage.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us off to new business number, item number nine, consideration of a resolution approving electronic signature policy for the city of Glendora. I'd like to invite, again, our city clerk, Kathleen Sussman, to present.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're here to discuss and request council approval of a resolution that would approve an electronic electronic signature policy for the city of Glendora. Next slide. To give you a little bit of a background, back in July of twenty eighteen, the city council approved the purchase and upgrade of the city's electronic document management system and agenda management system to OnBase. In addition, at that meeting, council also provided direction for staff to prepare a electronic signature use policy which could be utilized with the new EDMS system. Next slide. As of right now, the city has moved forward with the transition to OnBase. The agendas and the agenda workflows have all been created and are being utilized citywide. So, and then, so we were in the process of, we're in the process of finalizing some of those workflows when COVID hit, which of course happened back in March, and has brought some significant changes to city operations, which has increased the need for electronic signature use policy to ensure our city operations. The city staff has looked and met with DocuSign to enter into a agreement. This agreement has been vetted through the IT Division to ensure that the signatures are secure and that it integrates appropriately with the city's enterprise systems. With that, we want to present that signature policy for council consideration. Executing specifically documents related to council meetings has gone from taking a day, sometimes half of a day, to now sometimes it can take weeks, if not two weeks. So we want to try and transition those, those agreements, resolutions, ordinance, and minutes to utilize this new system as soon as possible. Next slide, please. There were four areas that we wanted to focus on when we developed the policy. Security and legal compliance was one of those areas. Integrating with our current business processes, we didn't want to have to create something that created an additional process. We wanted to use some of the processes we already had or have them connect into those processes. We want to simplify the workflow, and then we, of course, were looking for cost benefits. Next slide, please. Next step, if the city council approves the resolution presented before them today, staff will begin the software integration and testing, will establish roles, training, identify current processes and scopes that can be utilized to launch the short, what we would call a soft rollout, and define project success. At this point, our initial rollout will be what we call a soft rollout, and it will involve the city clerk's department and transportation, and the city attorney has graciously volunteered to work with us on that so he doesn't have to get inundated with documents requiring his signature. He'll be able to do it from the comfort of his own home. Next slide. This year, there is no fiscal impact associated with coverage of the contract as we utilize current funds that we already had budgeted. As we expand the use of the service, there may be future fiscal impacts of estimated fifteen thousand per year that will be included in the next budget cycle if, if we move in that direction, and if that, that expansion occurs. Next slide. Tonight, I'm here to request that the city council approve a city council resolution entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glendora, California, adopting a city council policy regarding electronic signatures. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Kathleen. Well done. Mendel, you want to start us off?
I have none, and I support it. Excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mendel. David?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Gary?
One, one quick question. While we're dealing with this, Kathleen, I know there's times that we have a need to have documents notarized. Have we looked into remote notaries at all yet? Is that part of a plan?
That is part of phase two. Right now, I'm actually looking at what that would really entail. I'm, I am, I am a notary, so I've been working with the association to try and figure out exactly how that would work and what we would need to do additionally. It would require some additional staffing to get trained on notarizations, because it can also open up new service, I think would be a nice, a good way to put that. It could open up a new service. It could require fees that the council would have to set. So if we move in that direction, that, that portion of the phase would probably be brought back in July when council reviews the fee schedule after the budget or during the budget review.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Gary. Karen?
Nothing.
Thank you. Kathleen, on exhibit A, I noticed that letters or transmittal are not on the list. I would imagine that that would still require a normal, regular wet stamp, or wet signature, or a PDF signature?
As of right now, yes, it would. If there is an interest to look into making those electronic signatures as well, I would, I would need to verify that that is an acceptable usage for the e-signature. And we didn't actually look in that area. So if that is council's direction, I can research that and then get back.
Okay, because we are probably active in sending letters out. What, what other exceptions aren't listed that might require a wet signature? Anything come off the top of your head?
No, no, that, that was, and honestly, I'm not even sure, sure if it's not allowed. I just didn't validate it. We really, because I was in a rush to get this before you, we pretty much went through council meetings, what we process, how we process these documents. I worked, reached out to all the departments, and I apologize, I didn't even think of the legislative letters that get sent out.
No worries with that. I know from a housekeeping standpoint, this is going to be a godsend. It's going to really help with the process and keeping things clean and organized. But do we have any sense or an idea of the time savings that staff will enjoy from this?
I think it will be significant, because we, actually, when we first started looking at this, when we upgraded to OnBase, there was going to be a time savings in our current process. With COVID, processing documents has almost tripled the time it takes us to get a document executed, because a lot of vendors are quarantined or working from home, and you can't mail anything, because nobody's in the offices. So, like I said, on average, a agreement to execute can right now take us anywhere from a week to three weeks. And if it's another government agency, it could take even longer, because some of them are only allowing signatures in certain ways.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kathleen.
You're welcome.
If I could just real quickly, Kathleen, it might be helpful. We're, we're sort of assuming that everybody that may be watching this understands what electronic signatures are. Could you maybe just give us a brief explanation as to what the process is, so there is an understanding?
So the process, as we proposed, it is basically what we will use. We are going to contract with DocuSign. DocuSign will let us take our documents and create specific signature lines that we can send out that would allow me to, like, tonight, we have three, I think, three, two resolutions. Oh, yeah, they're all mine. Two resolutions that have to be executed. So right now, what we do is when we finalize the council meeting, we add the information we need on it, and then we physically route it to the mayor, the attorney, and whoever else needs to sign that document. This will allow me to actually send it to however many people I want at one time, get their signatures electronically. They don't have to come into City Hall. I don't have to mail it to somebody. It's completely secured. It's encrypted. DocuSign is one of the top vendors for processing of e-signatures, and it will send it right back to me. It will also allow me to send the email, the fully executed agreement at my fingertips, since I will no longer have to make copies, send, send it out. It will completely set that electronic process up for us.
So there is a strong possibility that a lot of documents will never be printed on paper, and the signatures are secured, because there's an identification as to exactly what computer that signature was signed on, exactly what time, where the computer was located at. All of that kind of stuff, in order to make this stuff really secure. It's, it's impressive with just how secure electronic signatures are.
Correct. And the proposal or the policy presented and DocuSign meet all the requirements set by the state as well as the, the federal agencies that regulate that. It's one of the reasons we decided to move forward with them.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No. Elvia, can you please read the proposed resolution?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The recommended action is to approve city council resolution CC twenty twenty one dash zero three entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Glendora, California, adopting a city council policy regarding electronic signatures. Do we have a motion?
Don't move.
And do we have a second?
Second. Gary?
Thank you. I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedandall?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Alawas?
Yes.
And that passes five zero. Thank you, Mayor.
We got to run through this so we can get, have David commit to his ice cream offer.
Okay.
So with that, brings us to city councils. So with that, brings us to city councils, staff items and reports. Mendel, you want to start us off?
No, nothing. Yep, I'm good.
Gary?
Nothing.
David?
Nothing, thank you.
Karen?
Nothing.
Oh, God, I have to say something here. I just want to let everybody know, remind everybody again about the twenty fourth Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. So I'll leave it at that. Anyone from staff wish to to say anything? No? Okay, we're good. I'd like to ask the city attorney to report on any closed session action items that were taken previously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and ladies and gentlemen participating virtually in this meeting. In a special council meeting held earlier tonight, the city council met in closed session with the city attorney's office to discuss facts and circumstances which could give rise to exposure to litigation in one case. Authority to meet in closed session was specified in the special meeting agenda. And in the notice of the agenda item, there was a privileged and confidential briefing by the city attorney's office. Questions were asked and answered. No reportable action was taken. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bill. We adjourn this meeting at eight thirty two in the memory of Mr. John Wallace and Mr. Chris Beck. Good night, everyone.